All right, for this evening, I'm going to call to order the city of Platteville's regular common council meeting on Tuesday, June 12th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a little bit different than we usually do as our president and our pro tem are both out for this evening. First order is we're going to do roll call. Eileen Nichols is excused, Sina Sharp is excused, Barbara Doss is excused, Robin Klein.
President.
Don Francis.
Yeah.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
And the next order of business is we are going to select an acting council president for the remainder of the meeting. We'll do so by nomination. If I could get a nomination.
I nominate Don Francis.
We have a nomination for Don Francis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Robin. I will turn it over to Mr. Francis.
I move to close the ballot.
Thank you.
Are you speaking to the mic?
You are able to continue with the rest of the meeting and we'll start with the special presentation. If you would like to move to the center. All right, I'm going to kick things off this evening with two special recognitions. As you're aware, it's been our practice to call out at council meetings the retirements of employees that have served 30 years or more, and we had two of those earlier this month. The first one was Carol Rennecker, who served with the city for 34 years. Carol's not with us this evening. She's, hopefully she's out there in TV land watching us. But the proclamation for Carol reads as follows: "In recognition of Carol Rennecker's 34 years of outstanding service and dedication to the city of Platteville, whereas Carol Rennecker has faithfully served the city of Platteville starting as a part-time employee in 1978 and a full-time employee since 1984, and whereas Carol has supported many different departments and services within the city over the years, including building maintenance, community development, building inspection, rental inspection, and assessing; whereas Carol has always provided exceptional customer service; whereas Carol has been a great listener and sounding board for citizens and city staff; and whereas Carol's vast knowledge of the city has allowed her to serve as the go-to person for answering any and all questions related to the city of Platteville; whereas Carol has embodied the spirit of public service in faithfully, diligently, and honestly executing her duties; and whereas Carol's knowledge and professional talents have contributed to making Platteville, the Platteville community, a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore I, Karen Kurt, City Manager of the city of Platteville, on behalf of the common council and city employees, both past and present, do hereby wish to express our sincere appreciation to Carol Rennecker for her dedication and service to the city of Platteville." And I'm going to pass this along to our community development director, Joe Carroll, and I'm sure he will be able to get that to Carol. The second recognition that we have for this evening is for Janet Sanders. Janet served for 37 years with the city of Platteville. Whereas Janet Sanders has faithfully served the city of Platteville since 1981 and has had a positive impact on the careers of many officers and dispatchers. And whereas Janet has been integrally involved with answering 911 calls, emergency service dispatching, and the administration of the city's parking program for many years. Whereas Janet has served loyally, and she's been a calm voice on the phone and the radio during countless emergencies, both large and small. Whereas Janet has embodied the spirit of public service and faithfully, diligently, and honestly executing her duties during stressful times at all hours of the day. And whereas Janet has twice instructed parents on CPR techniques over the phone assisting with the recitation of babies and saving two lives, which I did not know and is awfully amazing. Whereas Janet's professional talents have contributed to making the Platteville community a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore I, Karen Kurt, City Manager of the city of Platteville, on behalf of the common council and city employees, both past and present, do hereby wish to express our sincere appreciation to Janet Sanders for her dedication and service to the city of Platteville. And I'll pass this along to our police chief.
All right, thank you Karen.
And maybe, and maybe just in case they are watching, we could give them a round
All right, we have another special presentation, the 2017 audited financial statements from Johnson Block and Company. Brent Nelson, come on up.
Thank you. My name's Brent Nelson. I'm with Johnson Block and Company. I'm here reporting on the 2017 audited financial statements. The, our bound report we issued as a result of the audit went out with the board packets. It's a 60, 70-page document. I have a copy of that with that, or with me tonight if there are any questions with that. Otherwise tonight I was going to focus on a higher level PowerPoint presentation, try to concentrate on the big financial changes during 2017. We've completed the audit of the city of Platteville for the year ended 2017, issued our bound report. I believe you all have a hard copy and electronically. We've issued unmodified opinions on those financial statements, meaning that in all material respects, we feel the financials are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The scope of our audit included all funds, governmental funds, utility funds. We also audit the Platteville Housing Authority, a separate entity, but within the scope of our audit. Management, before we finalized the audit, management reviewed and drafted the report, accepted, accepted any audit adjustments we had and approved of everything before our final issuance. As part of our audit contract, we prepare the audited financial statements as a service. Ultimately, they are the responsibility of management. We, our responsibility is opining on them, expressing an opinion on them being in accordance with GAAP. In addition to our audit, we also perform, prepare a few regulatory reports on behalf of the city. For the utility side, we submit a annual report for the Public Service Commission, and then another report that goes to the Department of Revenue for city funds. Overall, 2017 financial highlights, governmental funds increased approximately $321,000 during 2017. Breaking that down at the fund level, the general fund, the most, the city has a number of different funds in its, in its ledger, 10 to 20 funds I'd estimate. Some of the funds that changed more significantly, the most significantly, were the general fund, increased approximately 225,000 itself. And my next bullet point kind of explains where that came from. The general fund on an overall basis reported favorable variances compared to the budget. Actual revenues were more than budgeted revenues. Actual expenditures were a little bit less than budgeted expenditures. The next fund that changed significantly, the most significantly, was Tiff District Number 7 downtown here, increased 222,000, approximately 222,000 during 2017, which is, has been a change, Tiff District Number 7 has, at least the last several years, been showing a deficit. But one thing, the most notable thing that changed with Number 7 was that, and my bullet point, 2017 was the first year that Tiff District Number 5 started providing support to District Number 7. During 2017, District Number 5 transferred $578,000 from it, from its access revenues to Tiff District Number 7. So, any profit that Tiff District Number 5 made got transferred to Tiff District Number 7 in 2017. And that was the first year that that, that transfer took place. And then, as far as a fund that went, Tiff District Number 6 decreased, its fund balance went down approximately 167,000 during 2017. Net position of the water and sewer utility, it's a combined utility. Overall, the utility increased its net position by approximately $958,000 during the year. Just looking at the trend in the general fund, fund balance, a five-year trend, 2013 on the far left, 2017 on the far right. You can see 2017 was in the middle of the last five-year range. This is total general fund balance. There's different classifications of general fund balances. Fund balance restricted for specific purposes. That could be by donor, donor restrictions or other external restrictions. There's also assigned fund balances where the city council has assigned funds for a specific, for a specific reason. Unassigned fund balance at 12/31/17 was $2,316,000. And that represents 29% of 2017 general fund expenditures. And just comparing that number to city fund balance policies. City fund balance policy is to maintain a minimum of general fund unassigned fund balance of 20%. So, as of 12/31/17, the city was above their, their policy minimum. Looking at revenues, look at the governmental funds. So this would be the general fund as well as the Tiff Districts, capital projects, funds. The biggest piece of the pie, the biggest revenue source of the governmental funds is tax revenue, which represents 46% of the total governmental revenue, followed by intergovernmental revenues of approximately 34%. So those two sources make up the biggest sources of city revenues. There is a comparative look on this slide, 2017 compared to 2016. Just some things that changed between those two years that I thought were notable. Intergovernmental revenue went from approximately 2, or 4.9 million down to 4.5 million, or closer to 4.6 million. In 2016, the moving Platteville Outdoors project was ongoing. There were some intergovernmental grants received as part of that. And then the EDA project out at Tiff 4 was wrapping up more so in, in 2016. That was about done going into 17. Public charges for services was up approximately 93,000. There were some new revenue sources during 2017. Most notably, the ambulance service charge was new. That was approximately 117,000 of revenue. And then, the wheel tax started in 2017 as well. Loan repayment was up significantly, about 286,000. Some loans receivable on the city's books were paid off. Once the city received those funds, they turned around and paid off some debt they had issued on, in accord, or in conjunction with those receivables. Miscellaneous revenues were up, that's interest income. Some other donations were up as well. The most significant intergovernmental revenues were general transportation aid of about 700,000 and shared taxes of about 2.5 million. Those two sources alone make up about 69% of total revenue. Just turning to the next slide, for the property tax role, 2017. The biggest piece of the pie is the local, local school district, makes up about 40% of the city of Platteville's tax role, followed by the city itself, the amounts it retains itself that represent about 29% of the tax role. And those percentages are comparable between years. Overall, property tax revenue, five-year trend, has been trending upward in the last five years. This would be excluding tax increment revenue. Annual increases have been anywhere from 2% to 5%. From 2016 to 2017, property tax revenues went up about 5%. But overall, in the five-year trend, they've historically, or these past five years, been going up between 2% and 5%. The trend in equalized value of the city has been steadily increasing as well. For the most part, it's been going up about 2% to 3% a year, with the exception of between 2013 and 2014, there was a spike up about 12% between those two years. But overall, it's been increasing about 2 to, 2 to 3% a year. Net new construction, 2017 net new construction was approximately $6.4 million, which is about 1% of the 2016 equalized value, which, which is a notable number because the city can increase its tax levy by its net new construction. So I pointed, pointed that number out. Slide nine, trend in shared revenues. The state of Wisconsin collects tax revenue and, and part of the state statutes requires them to distribute that out to municipalities, counties. And that could be used at the city's discretion, how they use those funds. Shared revenues the last five years has overall been pretty, pretty flat, as you can see by the graph. Hasn't, it's been about 69% of total intergovernmental revenue, but it really hasn't, it's been unchanged the last five years. Just turning to the expense side of things. Looking at governmental expenses, the biggest category of the city's expenditures is in debt service. For 2017, it was about $3.2 million, followed by public safety as the next, next biggest governmental function of the city, followed by capital outlay, infrastructure improvements, and other equipment purchases. Those are the biggest three functions of the city activities. Public Works was, was down from 16 to 17. In 16, there was an airport terminal project going on that, without a comparable cost in 2017. Conservation and Development saw a sizable decrease. There was, as part of the Tiff 7 project, with, in with the library project, there was a developer incentive paid in early 2016. So that's, that was why 2016 costs were unusually high. Capital outlay was also down. 2016 had trail costs, EDA costs. More, more projects were going on in 2016 than 17. And then, debt service over, there was some refinancing activities in 16 that, without similar comparable refinancings in 17. So that was why debt service was down approximately a million dollars between years, was just that refinancing transaction. Slide 11, just looking at the water and sewer utility side of things. The biggest source of revenue in that fund is sewer charges, which represents 49% of that fund's total revenue, followed by water, or water sales, which represents 27%. The sewer utility, the, the water rates have been unchanged since I believe 2013. The sewer rates increased middle of 16. So 2017 saw a full year of those new rates. So that, that would be part of the reason why the sewer revenues were up between years. That rate was in effect all year. Slide 12, on the water and sewer expenditures. Overall, expenditures were pretty comparable between 2017 and 2016. The biggest expenditure of the utilities is depreciation on its plant, the treatment plant, the collection system, and water plant, or transmission and distribution. Those things getting depreciated. That's the biggest expenditure of the utility, followed by administration in general, and then treatment costs. But overall, 2017 utility expenditures were right in line with 2016. I just want to put together a slide on what the city's long-term debt is. For governmental activities, which would be the general, general fund, capital projects fund, Tiff District debt, general obligation debt at 12/31/17 was $20,572,000. There was some, there was some debt issues during 2017. Increases for general obligation debt increased, increases during near $4,350,000. Some of that was restructuring of some debt, but there was some new infrastructure projects that were financed with, with debt issuances. Tax increment revenue bonds, about 3.4 million of those debts outstanding at year end. Tiff 5 and Tiff 6 have some revenue bonds associated with them. Compensated absences would be employee staff time that would be paid to them upon their departure from the city. That gets accrued as a liability for the government-wide financial statements. Business-type activities is your utility, water and sewer utility. And their debt, long-term debt is all in revenue bonds, so it's not tied to the tax levy at all. It's separate, tied only to, to be repaid by the revenues of the utility. There hasn't been any revenue bonds issued by the utility in the last several years. So that long-term debt of the utility steadily been going down. At, at year end, about $15 million outstanding in the utility at year end. Just a general observation, general, general obligation debt totaled, or the debt limitation as set by the state of Wisconsin is limited to 5% of equalized value of the cities, of the city limits, which calculates to 39, or 33,190,000. That's the most general obligation debt that the city can take out. And comparing that to what they, what the city's actually taken out of about $20,572,000, there is, there is some capacity to take on more debt. I'm not recommending to take on more debt, but there is capacity to issue additional debt if it's needed. I know in 2018, there were some debt issuances that have already taken place. So that doesn't factor that in at all, the 38% capacity. Any questions on the financial activities?
Any questions for Brent?
I don't know that it's a huge question, but I'm curious why there's not an increase in compensated absences. Doesn't that happen? Assuming that is a moving target.
So you're on page 13. Looking at the governmental activities, it actually went down. I'd have to dig into why specifically that went down. I know there were...
Probably retirements.
Yeah, I can't remember what year some of those retirements hit. I'm guessing some of that staff departures in 2017.
Maybe I just don't know for sure how to read it. I was just assuming there was an, an increase and decrease always shown, like as staff that's still here accumulates, and then you pay out some. So I was thinking those numbers would be...
Yeah, and you're right. Continuing staff would have gone up, more than likely. Whereas there would have been some payouts to staffs that have departed or left, and, or just staff that have used some of that time off. In this case, we did just net it. But we could gross that up. But this is just a, a net of those.
Okay. I guess I would also add that the city changed their, they have a policy with respect to the payout of accrued, but unused sick leave. And over time, as more employees fall under the new policy, that overall liability is going to go down.
I did, just have one other point on the last slide, slide 14. In conjunction with our audited financials, we're required to issue a required audit communication document, and it's stapled within the bound report. I'd invite management and the council to read through it if they haven't already. Goes through what, what our role is as the auditor, what's management's role. Then there's the section for some of our observations, things we saw in the audit of note. One thing I wanted to point out tonight was tax incremental financing district number four is winding down. Its expenditure period has lapsed within the last three or four years, so it's not incurring any additional costs. Now it's in the payoff stage, where all that increment's paying off its past costs. It's projecting that it'll recover its costs upon receiving increment in 2019. So the council, the council will need to decide when to, to close that district. Couple options are out there to consider, because some of this is time-sensitive. There's an affordable housing extension available. The state of Wisconsin passed a law, a little less than 10 years ago, that a Tiff district before it closes, but after it's recaptured its costs, can repurpose that increment for up to a year to be used for affordable housing, anywhere within the city, not limited to that Tiff district, anywhere in the city. So it's something, I'm not saying to do it, but it's definitely something to consider. I know the city's going through a housing study, I believe now, to see what the housing needs are, but it's, there is that option to repurpose those increment funds. And then another thing I mentioned, the termination resolution has some time sensitivity. If it's done before April 15th, 2019, an increment won't be received in 2020. If it's done after April 15th, the increment will be received, which could lead to the city paying out more in refunds to Grant County, Southwest Tech, and the school district. So it's something to consider. If, if the 2020 increment isn't needed, should the city close that before April 15th? So. And then, once it, once the district is closed, there is a final accounting report that's due within six months of year end, and a final audit that, that a CPA firm has to do. So, a couple of things to consider. I know the city's had some Tiff districts closed in, in the last 10 years, but Tiff, Tiff 4 is winding down as well. Want to extend our thanks to everyone at the city that helped us through the audit process. The audit went really well. We received full and complete cooperation. Thanks for letting us be of service. We're available throughout the year for any questions that arise.
All right, thank you Brent. All right, next on the agenda is the consideration of consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council, acting council president, if you would prefer separate discussion and action. There's council minutes from May 22nd regular meeting and the May 31st special meeting. Payment of bills, financial report for May, appointments to boards and commissions, which there have been two, to the Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Joshua Chamberlain, and to the Historic Preservation Commission, an alternate position, Nathan Pop. We have licenses, licenses, first temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to the Friends of the Mining and Rallo Jameson Museum for Platteville Museum's volunteer picnic on Monday, July 9th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Also, a temporary Class B to sell fermented malt beverages and wine to Platteville Regional Chamber for Grant County Economic Development Meeting at the municipal airport on June 27th, from 5 to 9:00 PM. One-year and two-year operator license to sell or serve alcohol. And number four, annual fermented malt beverages and intoxicated liquor license renewals. Finally, permits, one for fireworks on the 4th of July, and a parade for the Platteville High School homecoming on Friday, October 5th, starting at 1:30 PM. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, and we'll vote. All right, there's a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we'll move on to citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. No, seeing none. We'll move on to reports. Board commission committee meeting minutes. First, the license committee, which I am on along with Nichols and Sharp, and I have nothing to add to those three. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, I also have nothing to add. Museum board, Stockhausen?
Just what was mentioned during the information regarding their party for volunteers. Just want to emphasize that, which is listed here as July 9, 5:30 to 7 o'clock.
All right. And Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No addition.
Other reports in the packet include the Water and Sewer Financial Report from May, the Airport Financial Report, also from May, and Department Progress Reports. Any comments or questions from the council? Move up to our first and only action for tonight. Resolution 1816, authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources principal forgiven financial assistance agreement, lead service line agreement 4881-07 Phase 2. Howard?
Yes, thank you. This is the second phase of our lead service line. Last year, we did Phase 1 for a little over 310, for 310,000. This year, we're approving and accepting the remaining $200,000. And so, this totally is accounted for separately. I have an update as of 3:00 p.m. today. We have 556 known lead lines, 395 have reserve funds of just under $440,000. We have 231 of those have been completed with 255,000 reimbursed, and the city has requested reimbursement from the DNR for all the lines that were done in 2017. That was 187 lines at a little over $207,000. So it's been a successful program. We still have a little bit of money left for those last-minute people. Please don't delay, and I recommend that we approve the resolution so that we can get the other half of the money.
When is the absolute last day that someone can sign up for this?
Well, the last day is when the last dollar is accounted for, which is whenever that happens, or three years from today when we sign the documents.
You've done the math, I did not do it just now, but once the dollars are spent, how many lines are left unfinished?
There'll be over 100. I'd have to look. The state has a separate program that they've implemented. They established a new law where utilities have the ability to do loans under certain conditions for people to do that, but it's nothing anywhere near this principal forgiven program.
Thank you.
I would just note that Platteville was fortunate to receive two of these loan forgiveness program grants. And really, I think we counted at least on the first grant, maybe there were only 30 to 40 communities that did receive money. So we are really fortunate to have been able to receive two and to be able to have made the progress that we have made. I think it's going to make us unique among Wisconsin communities.
I deeply appreciate it, so thank you for the work that's gone into it.
Are there questions or comments? Right to have a motion.
I move...
Go ahead.
No, go on. I move to approve Resolution 18-16, accepting principal forgiveness loan 4,881 in the amount of 200,000 for Phase 2 of the lead service line program and authorizing the city manager and city clerk to sign the appropriate documents.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to information and discussion. We have the downtown reserve parking policy.
Earlier this year, the council adopted some new policies and ordinances with respect to downtown parking, following the work of the Downtown Parking Task Force. An additional community input, since then, staff has been meeting to sort of work out the details with respect to implementation. And so, attached, you find a draft new policy with respect to downtown, which we're now calling reserved parking. Draft sample downtown parking guide that is still a work in progress. This will be a brochure that will have, an insert that will also contain an application for reserved parking. And then lastly, you can see sort of a mock-up of new signs for downtown parking that would actually be put at the lot entrances, which is different than how we sign our lots today. We think this will be more visible and easier for our guests and residents to be able to understand.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I'm trying to get to the document.
Sure. To 78, if you can jump that way.
This goes into effect September 1?
We would, yes. Basically, the rental charges would take place September 1. We would start arranging rental earlier than that. I think we're anticipating the Mineral Street Lot to be completed at the end of July?
End of July, if not earlier.
Karen, on the map, I was wondering if you were to add the post office?
I will make that note.
Well, there's just a few, you know, buildings that are put on it, and, you know, public buildings, and post office is not on the map.
Where do these flyers, where do you expect for them to be? Just in City Hall, or is there, I'm just curious?
Well, we certainly would make all this information available online to Main Street, to any downtown landlord or business that was interested in having them.
Probably in the library, too?
Library would be another excellent location.
All right, thank you. Moving on to next, the Contract 6-18 sidewalk repair. Howard?
Thank you. This is our annual contract. We have two parts. We grind down tripping hazards, or we do full removal and replacement. We sent bid packages to five contractors. Four of them sent back bids, two for grinding the trip hazards, and two for sidewalk replacement. I have the bid tabulation with the bidders and the low bids for that, and so I'll be recommending award to the low bidders.
Questions for Howard?
Are these companies you've used before?
Yes.
What's the completion date for the work?
I would have to look, but I believe we normally give 90 days after the signing of the contracts.
Takes the determination on what sections of the street are taken care of?
It's city staff. We use our maps to identify where we've been in previous years, and based on the budget, we identify as best we can, full blocks to do work on in each year, and just kind of keep moving around the city to try to cover as much as we can with the funds available.
We used to have 40,000 for the budget, I believe, for this item. How would you rate the status as far as the sidewalks as to their condition?
There are always, there's always going to be sidewalk to be done. This is, it's a level of effort. It depends on what the staff and the council ultimately approves for that level of effort.
Well, we, would you say we're going backwards? 25, was it 25,000 versus 40,000?
I think it would be better if we had more funding to do more sidewalks, of course, but I think that with the identification and use of the grinding of trip hazards over the last four or five years, I think we've been able to help stretch some of the budget, because it's cheaper to just grind off a trip hazard than it is to actually remove and replace a square of concrete. So, you know, we may be going backwards a little bit, but it's not as bad as it could be because of the grinding.
So if someone called in with a real concern, do you feel you have the space to address it, or do the requests kind of pile up beyond what you have funding for?
Requests pile up some. As I say, we try to work systematically throughout the city. If there are specific egregious hazards that are identified, we do have some money in the budget to be able to identify and take care of those. As you can see, with the bid prices, we have a total cost of a little over 21,000, and as Councilor Killian pointed out, the actual budget is 25. So we do have a little flexibility to identify those egregious ones on a case-by-case basis.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to Rolling Hills Church Land Division, 1595 West Main Street. Joe?
Okay. Earlier this year, the council approved a conditional use permit to allow the Rolling Hills Church to construct a new building on part of the property at 1595 West Main Street. One of the conditions that was discussed during that approval was the need for them to have a certified survey map approved that would actually create the lot that they would purchase and use to construct their facility. So that's what this is for. It identifies, as I mentioned, the land that they will actually be purchasing. It's a little over five acres, just west of Moonlight Drive. The CSM creates that lot. It also provides for an extension of Creek Court, which will be used as the primary access to this lot, and it allows for, at least includes easements for the future extension of that street further west, and also for a future street extension back up to County Highway B. And that's kind of the location that has been identified as the second access point for that lot. They've also included an easement for a temporary cul-de-sac turnaround at the end of Creek Court, since it will not be fully extended at this time, so that would allow for adequate turnaround for emergency vehicles and so forth, any larger vehicles. So the CSM does meet the requirements as discussed in that conditional use permit, and it does meet our requirements, so. Normally, I would mention that normally the council doesn't approve certified survey maps, but since this one does include the dedication of public street, it does require council approval. Any questions?
Which organization pays for Creek Court, pleading Creek Court?
I'm not sure between the church and the other property owner how they're going to work that out, but it is a developer expense. It will be part of that project.
How are the neighbors doing?
So far, we've only had one neighbor that's come to the meetings. I don't remember his name. He's just south of Creek Court, and it seems to be his concern is where the sidewalk's going to go, if there is going to be a sidewalk. He's got some trees that he's concerned about losing, and he's concerned about how the stormwater is going to be managed for the development. And those details will be addressed when they come in for the rest of their conditional use permit. And the applicant was, at the Platteville Commission meeting, did indicate they're going to start the site plan design work yet this summer, so that approval could be coming yet this year.
So I'm, I appreciate that sidewalk will be included in this plan, though it's not in the survey, but survey map. I do appreciate that sidewalks will be included.
Will at least be discussed. It'll be up to the final approval what's required or not.
As far as the stormwater, what will be the city obligation as far as cost? In other words, the church is the reason for increased runoff taking place? So now, what does the city have to do as far as payment of the cost?
The city, the only thing that the city does is review the applications for stormwater management and erosion control permits, of which we get fees from the developer to help cover those costs. And then, we do inspection of the erosion control measures that are on their plan as part of the erosion control permit process, and the stormwater management facilities that are part of the stormwater management plan that they submit. This is all part of the site development plans that Joe has said that is going to be worked on later this summer. So we haven't seen exactly what they're going to do and where they're going to do it, but they need to do their erosion control and stormwater management in accordance with DNR and the city's ordinances.
In some ways, does the road kind of become a private driveway into the property?
Well, I mean, it isn't going to be private, but essentially, for the time being, it'll be, basically, they'll be the only ones that would be using it, because the rest of that property is, you know, farmland. So until it's extended further and there's additional development, it's probably going to be access for that church.
All right. All right. Last item is the 2017 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, CMAR, for the wastewater treatment plant. Howard?
Yes. This report is required to be submitted annually by the end of June to the DNR. It's a self-report on the condition of our treatment plant, the collection system, the experience and training of our operations personnel, and the financial and management capacity to run the system. We have a treatment plant that's in excellent condition. Two of our four operators each have over 30 years of experience. Our total system was graded A in all areas for 2017. And so, we have a resolution that is required by the DNR to demonstrate the council has reviewed and approved the submission for this year. Water and Sewer Commission will be reviewing this at their meeting coming up on Wednesday, and have their recommendation before the next council meeting.
Anything for Howard?
Well, I did ask my question of Howard on the ammonia, so I assume you're going to answer that. Possibly tomorrow?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, but you have ammonia data presented to nine places, so. About significant digits. And the other question I had was back on root removal. It says that only 1% of the system is done as far as removing the roots. Now, is the system, do I have the right numbers, 52 miles of?
Give or take, yes.
Sewer system, so that means we're doing about, what, a half a mile per year? Is that correct?
Yes. But we do, we do televising and cleaning of, of the additional amounts. I'd have to look, it was over 20%, if I remember right.
22%?
Yeah, 22%, which basically means that we inspect this on just under a five-year rotation. And what we're saying is that of that, of that amount, we only need to remove roots on about 1% every year out of the, out of the 22% that we're inspecting annually.
Do you have any idea as to the mileage left as far as the old type of setup, you know, clay tile and so forth, that gets out alignment and so on, and has problems with the roots versus PVC pipe? Can you look into crystal ball and tell us a number?
I can give you an approximate answer at the next meeting, if you'd like, based on, based on our GIS information.
I just wondered how, how we're coming along, I mean.
I, I think we're doing fairly well. I mean, we've had a lot of, of replacements in the 20-plus years that I've been here. You know, there's been a lot of replacement, a lot of tightening of the system over those years. But if you want a little bit better estimate than that, I can provide something at the next meeting.
Next meeting of the Water and Sewer, is it in July?
I was thinking that I could have, I could have an answer for you at the council meeting.
Oh, the council, okay, okay, fine. Thank you. I'm just curious as to where we're at.
Any other questions? Speak now, or I'm going to move to the next item. All right, this concludes the recorded portion of the meeting, because our next item is a work session of the City Hall Remodeling Plans. Thank you.